Welcome to the regular board meeting for October 23rd. I'd like to call this meeting together at 7:30. We have the roll call, please. Kathy?
Mrs. Rancourt?
Here.
Mr. Genitis? Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak?
Here.
Mr. Feely?
Here.
Ms. Hall? Chairman Neville?
Here. It looks like I jumped the gun here. Why don't we go to the invocation? Mrs. Rancourt? Pledge of Allegiance.
Just real quick, coming up will be Halloween before our next meeting. So I just want to say for everyone to be safe, trick-or-treating, and driving around the streets. That's it.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A fire evacuation announcement. Just in case we have to evacuate this chamber, there are two exits. One immediately in front of me and to your rear. Go out the double doors, out onto the lawn. The other one is to my left, your right. Go out the double doors, take an immediate left through those double doors, go down the stairs, and out the doors into the parking lot. Dr. Schuman, do we have board guests?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one board guest tonight. Ms. Lori Gates is here to speak about the Wreaths Across America program.
I believe she has something for us to watch as well. Very good.
Hello.
Hi, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you for having us.
We're very, very pleased to have you.
This is Sample, everybody knows. Principal Parkman. Hello, everybody. I'm on the local committee for Wreaths Across America, which has become a, I was going to say countrywide, but it's also overseas, program. Morale Worcester, years and years ago, he'd hate to hear me say that, when he was young, won a trip to Arlington National Cemetery. And he remembered looking at all of those stones and the impact that it took, it had on him. As he got older, he ran his company, they do wreaths and they work with tree boughs. And so, one year, he had a surplus of almost 5,000 wreaths, nowhere to send them, and he thought, "Well, I could send these down to Arlington. I remember those graves. We could say thank you by sending these wreaths down." And it became something he started doing every year. It grew. And so, other people caught on and said, "Well, why can't we do that in our cemetery? Can we do it here? Can we do it there?" A bunch of different questions. It's now done in over 800 cemeteries across our country and overseas on the U.S. graveyards that are overseas. They established a nonprofit where they allow people to do fundraising through them. They're a nonprofit, but any group can register. They sell wreaths for $15 a wreath. They're sponsored for a specific cemetery. The wreaths are delivered a couple days before the mandated date. It's usually the second Saturday in December each year. This year, it happens to be the third. There's actually a proclamation made by Congress calling it Wreaths Across America Day. And at noon sharp Eastern Standard Time, everybody in all of these cemeteries holds the same ceremony. Speeches, pledge of allegiance, national anthem, where we give thanks. This is not about saying, "I'm sorry that you're gone," to a veteran. It's, "I'm thanking you for what you've done for me." So they're not decorating graves. They're honoring veterans. We are very fortunate to have one of the cemeteries here in Enfield where we can hold this ceremony every year. This year, it's December 15th at noon. It's at St. Patrick's King Street Cemetery, which is the one up across from Namco. Maine sets a theme every year. This year is "Then, Now, and Forever, Let's Make It Personal." We have a great lineup of speakers and information that's going to take place, including the board chairman speaking and reading our roll call of KIA's for World War I. We plan on reading a roll call from World War I all the way through current day with different speakers of everyone Enfield has lost. There's something that they call the Veterans Parade, the largest veterans parade. When these trucks leave Maine, they're in Harrington, Maine, it's pretty far north, they head up to the Canadian border and they hand some wreaths over to our neighbors. And then they head south to Arlington. They stop in these different states along the way to push their agenda of remember, honor, and teach, so that they can reach children, to teach them about how to thank veterans, how to realize what's going on in major world, what it is. Connecticut has four to six stops, depending on the year, in the entire state with one truck. That one truck is carrying about 5,000 wreaths that are headed to Arlington National Cemetery. They come through with fire, EMS, police, Patriot Guard, anybody who wants to join this escort. It's really an amazing sight to see. And last year, we were honored that Enfield was one of their stops. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Sample to tell you what happened at the school when they came to Parkman last year.
Mrs. Gates came to talk to me about the Wreaths Across America, and I have to admit I knew nothing about it. I'd never even heard of it before Mrs. Gates entered my life last year. And so, I did some research on it, and she sent me many links to the site, because there's a lot of information on it. And it was something that I felt honored to be doing for our town. And I, of course, told Mrs. Gates that I would be happy to have our school participate in whatever needed to be done. So the first thing that we had to do was sell the wreaths. So we decided, you can make it a fundraiser if you want, and we decided as a staff and PTO that we were going to donate the profits of the wreath sale to the Enfield Food Shelf. And that's where it's going to go again this year. So we sold, I don't remember, Lori made?
Our cemetery number went from 38 wreaths donated in 2010 to 138 in 2011, so you sold quite a few.
So we sold quite a few wreaths, considering that it was, you know, I was coming from the position of the administrator, not knowing anything about this, and trying to promote it to my parents and my children and whatever. So Lori came to an assembly to kick off the wreath sale last year, because I talked to her, and I said, "I can't just hand out this pamphlet and not have them understand what it means." So we put together an assembly, a kickoff assembly, last year, and we're doing the same thing this coming Friday at 9:30. And at that assembly, Lori explains the Wreaths Across America program. We had a presentation of the color guard last year. This year, we're going to have a bugler with the kids at my school, they've been learning TAPS. And we're integrating that whole program into the wreath process, so that they can appreciate the fact that what they're trying to do when they sell the wreath is honor a veteran. So we have that starting on Friday. The other piece to this that we're doing this year, we had a very big assembly last December 8th, and I know some of you were present there. It was the most amazing thing I've ever seen in my life, when you saw the truck with all the wreaths coming down Weymouth Road. The fire department had their big ladder trucks with the flags hanging down, their police and the color guard. It was amazing, and our whole school was outside to greet them when they came. And after we greeted the truck, and the driver came in, and a representative from the wreath company, we went in and had a very, very nice assembly with the children. They had put it all together with their teachers, which we are going to do again this year with a little different twist. I invite you all to my school on December 11th to please come and see this event. It's amazing. Lori is amazing in organizing it. She got all, she had the MAGA school on Post Office Road, JFK, everybody on Enfield Street. We got flags given to the kids, so they could wave when the people were coming. I mean, it's just an incredible, incredible experience. We were honored to be asked to do it again, and I said, "Don't you think we should share it with another school?" And they said, "They thought about that, but they decided they wanted to come back to Parkman, so I'm not going to say no about that." The one special thing that we're doing this year that I want to share with you is Lori has asked, as something to motivate the kids, to have them do some kind of writing assignment or an essay or something like that. So we have been talking, and they're going to do, the kids are going to do some research on some veterans that are from Enfield, deceased, and go to a cemetery and do some research on that, and then write a letter to the veteran thanking them for their service. I was telling her, I met with my fifth grade teachers yesterday for a different kind of meeting, and we started talking about this. And what came out of that was that we're going to actually rent a bus, get school buses, and we're going to take the kids up to the King Street Cemetery next week, and we're going to let them find a grave of a veteran and write the name down and do a rubbing for, of that tombstone, and then bring it back to school and do their writing. And once they find the deceased veteran, they're going to go on the computers in the lab and Google the name and see what they can find for information on it. So that sort of evolved out of, since yesterday. So this is the kind of program that is. So it's very exciting, and I hope that you're all able to come on the 11th.
Very good.
We have two students with us tonight that would like to say a couple things about what they learned last year. So Zach and Sarah, if you could come forward, and then I have a video to show you after.
Okay. Kathy, can you just turn, this TV's not on.
It's in your drawer.
I don't think it is.
Maybe it's hers.
Okay. Why is that because of the kids? Go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Schuman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I am Sarah Wakowski, and I'm in the fifth grade at Parkman.
Is the red light on there? Okay. Sorry.
Wreaths Across America is a great cause. Fallen soldiers should be remembered, not just at Arlington Cemetery, but all across the nation. I truly enjoyed having Wreaths Across America truck visit my school last year. The ceremony at the school was meaningful, and I learned a lot about the veterans and sacrifices they made and continue to make to protect us in our way of life. I believe in Wreaths Across America's mission to honor, remember, and teach. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Zach Healy. I am now a student at JFK, but last year I was in the fifth grade. I learned that it is not too late to honor veterans. I also learned that it takes a great deal of time, money, and effort to get to Arlington Cemetery. I feel great that we are one of the few places that we're stopped at on the journey to Arlington. The presentation made me think of the veterans that are given, that have given their lives for us and also the ones that are still alive. We should remember, honor, and teach. Finally, I think of the cemetery being lit up by these wreaths on the grave stones. Thank you.
Thank you to the two of you. You represented your school well and the veterans. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Board appreciates it, too.
Thank you. And hopefully, this will work. I made this video, ETV is going to be showing it through November, to try to gain some momentum within the public, to get people out along the route as this truck goes by. As I was trying to put something together, I found a lot of videos online, a lot of footage from the early show. They did a segment on Wreaths Across America. So that's combined in here. But what's interesting is that when I went online to find pictures, somebody that was in that convoy as it came through Enfield had their camera, and they had posted them to a website. And I found these pictures. So what you're seeing is what they saw as they came through our town. After last year, you know, I started bugging them in February. What do we have to do to see if they would come back? And they said, "Are you kidding? We wouldn't miss Enfield for the world." There are patriotic towns, and then there's Enfield. They were so impressed with what these kids did, what the staff did at Parkman, so it really is a compliment that they're coming back. With any luck, this will work.
Yeah, there's a lot of prayer when you bring technology into your life.
It's good for us.
One man's gesture of remembrance and respect.
My word is certainly not about me. No, it's the veterans and what they've done for all of us.
Volunteers assembled in a labor of love. Older men from other wars, young people caught up in a splendid moment. A flag unfurled beneath a cloudless sky. A motorcycle escort started, and the wreaths headed south toward home, past small towns and big cities, four days south toward Arlington.
To say thank you for our military sacrifice.
Can you lay your life down so a stranger can live? Can you take what you need, take less than you give? Could you close everything without the glory and fame? Could you hold your head high when no one knows your name? That's how legends are made. He says what they say. He said goodbye, but never let go. We live, we die, 'cause you can't save us all. Can't take our chances, you. You're just coming, I'll never let go. Never let go. I know I can go. Can you lose everything you ever had planned? Can you sit down again and play another hand? Could you escape everything? Could the chance of being alone? And the grace of finding grace? What you can't do? That's how legends are made.
What your body will be held, and what life has been. Oh, my dear, my joy, and my love, oh, my joy. For the love of the Lord, I'll never forget. Oh, my dear, my delight. Oh, my delight. You're the Lord's delight. Oh, my delight. Oh, my delight. Oh, my delight. Oh, my delight. I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to Parkman School's Wreaths Across America program.
He says what they say. He said goodbye, but never let go. We live, we die, 'cause you can't save us all.
I wonder if you guys got it. The words were, "Remember, honor, and teach." I'm so proud of each and every one of you for the job you did, the presentation you put on for us. I love you. I want to thank you so much for inviting us to your school as Wreaths Across America, and I couldn't have asked for a better presentation. Thank you, each and every single one of you kids. And you all deserve, you all deserve a lot of this.
Turnout, it's inspiring for us to come into a town like this, a great town like Enfield, Connecticut, and see the kids waving the flags. Thank you to all the teachers here at Parkman. We obviously see that you get the teach part of this program, and we honor our veterans, and we remember those that have made the ultimate sacrifice. We thank the Gold Star families that suffered the loss of a loved one, and we promise them that we will never forget. Thank you.
You're just coming, I'll never let go. Never let go. Never let go. We say goodbye, but never let go. We live, we die, 'cause you can't save us all.
That's it. Thank you. I gave each of you a handout with some information on Wreaths Across America. It also has a list of the current participating fundraising groups. That could change at any given moment. But if you order a wreath for the cemetery and you use that group's code, that group gets $5 back from every wreath purchase, and it doesn't change your $15 wreath price. So it, like Mrs. Sample said, they're giving, there's the food shelf, so all the money that they raise, they then turn back over into the community. So the veterans, we thank them. The community gets to be part of it. We help the food shelf. The kids learn. It's win-win.
Fantastic.
Any questions?
The board have any question? I know a number of us had the privilege to go last year to attend the presentation. It was very, very moving, and I look forward to coming back to both events this year. And I just want to thank you, Lori, for all you do for our soldiers and for the veterans. I know you're, I'm on your email list now, and I know all the things that you're doing. So please, thank you on behalf of the board, and I'm sure a number of us will be very, very happy to purchase some wreaths. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to help disconnecting, but I'm going to do it.
Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to start tonight with Principal Van Tassel, and he also has his two assistant principals, Mrs. Collins and Mr. Clark with him. They're going to talk a little bit about two programs that are happening and taking place and in progress, about to happen at JFK Middle School. You're all familiar with the Rachel's Challenge Program, and a continuation of that with just a little different theme will be the Leaders for the Future Program. So they have put together a presentation here. They're trying a brand-new piece of software. They're using Prezi, not PowerPoint, and they're going to do this with their iPad. So this is a first on many levels for them, and we commend, we appreciate their efforts here, and we're looking forward to hearing what they have to tell us.
This is our first presentation with the Apples, and so I'd like to thank the Board of Education for giving us this device here. And hopefully, this will go well for us tonight. This, as I said, this is the first that we've done with this. Is it connecting with yours?
It just went off. I think it was on before. There it goes. You're there now. We're happy to see the new technology in use.
And we appreciate it. So what we'd like to do tonight, although that's a tough presentation to follow, but the presentation we're going to give has to do with some of the leadership opportunities that are happening at JFK Middle School this year. And connecting nicely with what you just heard, we're always seeking opportunities where our kids can become leaders and actively involve themselves in civics and service learning projects, just as if with the Wreaths Across America. So this evening, we're going to give a present, presentation on a few of the leadership things that are going on at JFK Middle School this year. To begin, I'm going to begin with a quote from John F. Kennedy. "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." We felt as though this quote was appropriate to this presentation as we are discussing leadership. It's our intention to have the students engaged in very creative ways this year to promote student leadership. Also, we want our students to understand that leadership is a continuous process. You know, leadership is about learning, and we hope through the activities that we're going to engage them in this year that they will begin to recognize that. This year, we began with really a focus on our instructional core. And just to begin, I know Dr. Schuman, in one of his initial meetings with the Board of Education, he spoke with you in regards to the Public Education Leadership Project's coherence framework. And in that, at the very core, at the very center of that, was what was referred to as the instructional core, in which you address matters as it relates to curriculum and content, teacher instruction, and student learning. To make any changes in that instructional core, you have a defined theory of change or a theory of action. And this theory of action is really what is guiding our leadership efforts within the building this year with our students. This theory of action that we have is, if we establish clear expectations for students with a positive focus on academic achievement, positive citizenship, and civic engagement, then we will engage, inspire, and create the likelihood that our students will become lifelong learners, responsible citizens, and productive members of the communities in which they live. With every theory of action, you want to have action steps. And what I'm going to share with you, there are many action steps that we're going to be involved with this year, promote leadership within the building, and recognize students for the strengths and the positive things that they've brought to the, brought to the school. But the two that I'm going to share with you tonight are, first, we have Rachel's Challenge. We want to thank the Board of Education and the Town Council for once again providing us with this opportunity. It was a very moving presentation that we had for our students, and it has begun what we refer to as being a chain reaction. The story is an inspirational story of Columbine victim, Rachel Joy Scott. Two million people are touched by Rachel's message each year, and we can safely say, or we can say now that Enfield is a part of this chain reaction, as the entire community has been mobilized with this. Student assemblies were held at JFK Middle School. We had three assemblies, one for grade six, one for grade seven, and one for grade eight. And stemming from that, we created Friends of Rachel Club, which Mr. Clark is leading right now. We have over 100 students that are participating in this club, and there are a lot of great things that are coming out of it, a lot of great work that's coming out. A few of the things to note, we've begun kindness chains within the building. We've done some student-teacher recognitions, and then we've had some special theme days. What Mr. Clark is working with is the kids are starting to develop themselves into groups, and they're going to put together basically service learning projects, things that they would like to see John F. Kennedy School become, and ways of doing that. So we're looking forward to really seeing how this plays out over the course of this school year. It's our intent at the end of the year to have somewhat of a ceremony where we can recognize the students for all that they've done for the school. Quote by Rachel Joy Scott, "People will never know how much, how far a little kindness can go." This is our chain reaction. We hope that our students and teachers, working together, will make our school a special place where everyone feels safe and welcome. Our takeaways from the program was that we're going to look for the best in others. We're going to treat others the way we all want to be treated. We're going to choose positive influences. We're going to speak words of kindness, and we're going to forgive ourselves and forgive others. And with this, we just may start a chain reaction. Our second action step to go with the theory of action is this Leadership, Leaders for the Future Program, Student Leadership Development for Service Learning and Character Education. It's a Bond Stingle Leadership Development Program, developed especially for the students of John F. Kennedy Middle School, and this begins next Monday and Tuesday. I'm going to give you a little bit of a bio in regards to the presenter. John J. Bond Stingle is the founder of the Center for Schools of Quality. He's a native of Maryland. I've had an opportunity to speak with him two times over the past month and a half. He is looking forward to coming to Enfield and with, working with our students. He is a bestselling author. He's an international education consultant, a featured keynote speaker. He's the chair of the Malcolm Baldridge National Quality Program. He's a panelist on the National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, and he's been featured on CNN, C-SPAN, and Good Morning South America. A quote from his book is that "Successful schools are built on a strong foundation of quality," and that's truthfully what he's looking to do here with John F. Kennedy Middle School. He's coming here with some ideas that the students are going to actively be engaging themselves in to really promote a school of quality. The Leaders for the Future Program is two days of leadership and learning, as again, as I mentioned, October 29th and October 30th. as I mentioned, October 29th and October 30th. It's for grades six, seven and eight. We have 30 students. The 30 students that we went for, at the beginning of every, at the beginning of every school year, we have elections for student council. And we decided this year that for those students that did get elected, as well as the students who didn't get elected, those were kids who certainly wanted to have a leadership opportunity within the school. Those were the students that we had selected to participate on this. We have six mentor teachers as long, as well as administration that will be participating in this. Four to five weeks of service learning projects will ensue once we have our first two days of leadership training. And then at the end of that five-week period, John J. Bonstingle is going to return from Maryland to John F. Kennedy Middle School and we're going to have a celebration of the ideas and the events that students are going to come together with and work with their mentor advisors. Just a little bit of an idea of what they're going to do. Students will learn real-world skills such as teamwork and collaboration, creative problem-solving, critical thinking, data collection and analysis. They'll develop the ability to listen actively, to make effective public presentations and to resolve dilemmas in ways that help everyone. Projects are all based on John J. Bonstingle's groundbreaking bestselling book. So we're really looking forward to this. This is, we're off to a great start this year with John F. Kennedy and, you know, we're looking to do whatever we can to get our students engaged and promoting leadership certainly is going to result in some very good things for our school and for our students. And it's going to help us to do the good work that we do with them in the classrooms. So with that, that ends our very brief presentation to you and I'm here to answer any questions.
Would have any questions? Some of the reading before we get into the meeting, I noticed that on the 29th and 30th, you're going to have some representatives from, is it MassMutual and LEGO that are going to mentor or?
Dr. Schuman was able to actually get some executives from local companies who are going to be coming here. There'll be an initial kickoff event of which they've been invited to, which will be, I believe, the first 30 minutes Monday morning. And then over the next day and a half, the students are going to work with their mentor groups with J. Bonstingle and they're going to kind of decide on what type of a service learning project that they're looking to do. At the conclusion of it, which is going to be about 12:45 on Tuesday afternoon, the executives will return to John F. Kennedy Middle School. We'll have some media there. You are all invited to attend as well. And the kids are going to define what their projects are that they're about to embark on for the next four to six weeks. And then we'll conclude the event and then, as I said, for four to six weeks, kids will work with their mentors and then we'll have a celebration of events. I would think more towards the latter part of December, maybe beginning of January.
Very good. Is this something that, if it's successful, that you see continuing or is it?
I see it as a great opportunity. I really do. You know, I think what we have to do is see how the program goes. I think anytime we can get our students involved, thinking about how to better our school, I mean, we have the ideas and we know what we would like to do, but far too often, we overlook, you know, some of the ideas that maybe the students have. So this kind of gives them an opportunity to have a voice in the direction that we're moving, John F. Kennedy Middle School, and a lot of good can come out of that. They're taking ownership of the learning environment and that's what we want for them. So I could see this being, being a mainstay within our program.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Joyce?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I will hope that you will come back to us at regular intervals and let us know how this is going.
It's nice. We haven't been back here since last year and I would like to come back and be able to update you in regards to this, as well as other things that are going on at JFK. So we'll be back.
Very good. Thank you very much. We look forward to it. Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are several other items under the superintendent's report. I'll highlight some of them and then I've got some additional information to pass out to you. The school closings for Election Day, our schools will be closed, our teachers will not be in session. Our 12-month employees will be and the administrators will be working on some professional development activities that are mandated by statute during that day. Also, on Veterans Day, will be closed on the 12th, which is the Monday, and that means because the Town Council also will not be able to meet, as you may remember, we're going to be required to change locations for our meeting on the 13th. So our meeting will become a special meeting and the board or the Chair can just let me know what location you'd like to have that meeting in and we'll, we'll get that all set up and get an agenda out for that meeting. The youth vote program began last night over at JFK with the candidates being present at different tables and many, many students were there with their parents. We also had the consolidation table set up so that students and parents could learn about the referendum on the consolidation of the two high schools. It was, it was well-attended and a lot of information was given out. That'll continue with debates next week on Tuesday and Thursday night and then roll into the students being able to cast their ballots at some point before the election. Perhaps they will be accurate and predict what's going to happen on, on Election Day. Speaking of the consolidation, you have this document in front of you. This document stems from a discussion that the Chair and I had with the Town Manager and the Mayor regarding what we could put out to make sure all residents were aware that there were two referendums being voted on in the upcoming election. This was what was created at the Town Manager's office, run by the Town Attorney, so that it was okay to send it out. And it has gone to the post office and will be sent out in the next day or so, whenever the bulk mail is able to get out to every resident of the town. In addition to that, we wanted to create a document that was a little bit more detailed regarding the two referendum. So I'm going to pass this to you. This was just, just take one and pass it around. This document was, again, prepared by the Town Manager's Office, has been sent over to the school system for distribution by our schools through the students. Each student will receive one and be able to then take it home and share it with their families. We're looking to do this distribution sometime next week. And again, this is to raise awareness of the facts of the two referendum. It does not in any way promote or work against either one, but we just want to make sure that all the residents of the community had all the facts. And there's a contact number there for question two at the Town Manager's Office and a contact for the superintendent's office for question one, should any of the folks who receive these have questions regarding the referendum or any of the facts. So this should go out next week sometime.
The other items are self-explanatory, the grants report and personal report? Very good.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
Am I illegal in having a "Support the School Referendum" sign on my front lawn?
Absolutely not. The restriction by statute is that board members and employees are not allowed to expend public funds to promote or work against the referendum. But by, because you're not expending public funds, you're simply stating a position of your belief during your own personal time when you're not serving as a board member. That's perfectly fine.
Very good. Moving on to item eight, audiences. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? We welcome your comments and I'd like to ask each speaker to please state his or her name and home address as it appears on the signup sheet. Speakers will be limited to three minutes and can speak again if others have been heard the first time. I ask the speakers refrain from personal attacks on individuals during their comments and also refrain from using student names for confidentiality reasons. Lynn Skoll, please come forward.
Good evening. Lynn Skoll, Six Pine Crest Road. I'm here tonight to offer comments on two issues that touch and concern the Board of Education. The first is my attire. I am here to officially invite all of you to the First Readers' first 2001, whoa, 2001, 2012, 2013, school year celebration of 93 kindergarten, first and second grade students who have gained fluency in reading since the end of June last year. All of the students are residents of Enfield. They either go to our public school system, one of our parochial schools, or are homeschooled or are students who live outside the district but go to one of those schools. The event is on November 1st, which is a Thursday, a week plus two days from now, 6:00 PM at Enrico Fermi High School. And Dr. Schuman and Mr. Dreszky have agreed to be our official designees in terms of congratulating each individual student as they are called forward. We will endeavor to get them through so that they can do their other obligations for the evening. I know they have two events that evening. And so we just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of our celebration. We invite all of you to come. It is really probably one of the highlights of my new life to see all of these young people who have suddenly learned that when you open up a book and you can read it, great things happen. So we, as a First Readers' organization, really enjoy promoting that awareness that comes when you read your first book. So please join us if you can. The other issue that is of concern and/or comment to me tonight is I wanted to give all of you and the school system a word of thanks for the information that you have provided to voters concerning the high school referendum. I do know how hard it is as a board member not to be pro or con when you're in your professional capacity, as we can, shall say. And so I admire the fact that all of you have been very fair and open with the facts and yet have not gone overboard to support or work against the referendum in your public capacity and yet have supported us in your private capacities. So I offer my thanks on that and I hope that all individuals who need more information will go to enfieldsfuture.com to look up and see the facts that are available to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Gina Sullivan?
Hi. Gina Sullivan, 11th Spear Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Enfield Futures PAC on supporting the high school consolidation referendum. I'm hoping that there are many people watching at home tonight because this is probably one of the most important votes that we will cast in our town for a long time to come and we need to spread the word. So I ask that each of you watching tonight, share this information with as many folks as you can. There has been a lot of discussion about this referendum and I wanted to bring up some very important points. If we vote yes for the referendum, Enfield will have a state-of-the-art high school, which will not only benefit our children, but the town as a whole. The state will fund nearly 72% of this project. In my mind, it really doesn't get much better than that. If we vote no, then another town in Connecticut gets this money. Why would we, as citizens of Enfield, let this money slip away? It worries me that some citizens are under the impression that if they do not have children in the Enfield Public School, this referendum has no effect on them. This is incorrect and we need to spread the word now because our time is running out. This vote affects every taxpaying citizen in town. If the referendum does not pass, we stand to not only lose the state money, but we will have to spend close to $51 million to update two high schools, which have declining enrollment, and none of it will be reimbursed by the state. This fact concerns me as a taxpayer because my family is not in a position to have our taxes raised. Can those on fixed incomes afford a tax increase at a time where everything else is going up except incomes? My concern is not only as a parent with children in Enfield Public School, but as a concerned daughter for my 84-year-old mom, a homeowner and taxpayer in Enfield. Hi, Mom. She's watching. She's on a very fixed income now and cannot afford her taxes increased. And I'm sure there are many senior citizens in Enfield just like her in a similar situation. This is why the citizens of Enfield need to know how important this yes vote is for our town, as its outcome will not only affect our children, but all the citizens of Enfield. If you need more information, as Lynn mentioned, please visit enfieldsfuture.com. And please do the right thing on November 6th and vote yes on question one. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Randy Dagel, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to speak about two things. One, the Wreaths Across America. I was very fortunate to be part of it, participated in it with the Patriot Guard. And I just want to commend Lori Gates for outstanding organization, that she, she just puts it together and it's, if you truly get a chance to go there, it'll be memorable. I mean, I was choking up just watching it again. So I just really want to honor Lori Gates for putting it together again. Secondly, I'd like to speak regarding the consolidation of the two high schools. Currently, as board members, most of you know that there's probably anywhere from 20 to 30 students right now that have to go from one school to another during the school day to take a class because there's not enough students in each school to provide that course. So you're looking at 20 to 30 children that have to miss one period to get there and back. Also, the magnet schools, there's been talk about magnet schools, well, Enfield's school's not that good, so we're sending our kids to other places. There's approximately 410 of our kids that go to magnet schools. So as a taxpayer, we're paying for them to go to a public school, we're also paying them to go to magnet schools. So it's, it's just ridiculous to allow our schools to fall to the state that they're in. Right now, we offer approximately five AP courses and that's all. We have one, one course per day. By the consolidation, we'll be able to have additional AP classes and a much more flexible, flexibility of scheduling than them. Right now, our kids are required to have 22 credits. The state requirement, it's coming in pretty fast, within a couple of years, is going to be 25 credits to require. That's another burden right now. We don't have, again, the classrooms to provide the courses for them to get the credits. There's a lot of talk about the money part of it. And as Gina, excuse me, as Gina mentioned, the fixed income families are going to be mostly impacted financially on this. I'm afraid that in the ballot, the way the referendum is written, they're going to go there to vote for a president and they're also going to see the referendum questions and the very first sentence says $103 million for going towards the high school. Unfortunately, there's really not a lot that can break down to explain it all. So I'm going to try to explain the money in the savings and the repercussions of the vote no. The total project is estimated to be $103 million. At 72%, we're looking at a balance of approximately $32 million that's going to be required by the taxpayers of Enfield. Out of that, the estimated operational cost savings, not including any future retirements from this day forward, but just the operational cost savings we were projected, will be anywhere from $1.9 to $2.2 million savings per year. The bond remaining balance of $32 million, we're looking at approximately $1.6 million. So you're looking at potentially zero net increase to taxpayers for it to pass. We're going to get a 21st century building, state-of-the-art building, under warranty. We have to build, every part of this building is going to be removed and replaced and it has to be built for a minimum of 20-year standards. So we're looking at 20 years where we're pretty much maintenance-free as far as replacing anything. That is a big problem with this town and any other town is maintaining buildings. Again, now if it doesn't vote no, if people look at it and say, "Well, it doesn't affect me, I'm going to vote no." Well, they're going to be getting another referendum in the near future because we are going to be required to put another one out to, for the cost to increase to update and modify two schools. That number, we're looking at with the architect that we had here and state numbers, we're looking at minimum $51 million to projectively $78 million. And that number does not touch the upgrades of AP classes. This is just to do the minimum state requirement, life safety, code, equipment, and with that, those are considered, a lot of those are considered maintenance items. And with that, those are considered, a lot of those are considered maintenance items, which means the state will not reimburse. So, you're looking at, if this thing fails and it goes to another referendum, that we have to update the schools. And if that one fails, we are in dire straits of losing our accreditation. Our diplomas for our children will not be even accepted as NUNTAC if we lose our accreditation. And if people are worried about property values, you're going to see it plummet from then on. So, you're looking at approximately anywhere from six to nine hundred dollar increases per taxpayers if we have to flip the bill of seventy-eight million dollars by ourselves. We are, I believe, we're either the third or the fourth best reimbursement rate at the state. The normal rate for reimbursement for towns is fifty to fifty-two percent. We are seventy-two percent. This is a golden opportunity. The construction climate, we just had a state of the state with the governor several weeks ago and we are starting to see in the construction field, prices bottomed down and we're starting to see a minor increase. So, in this environment, we have, we're going to be getting the best construction costs out there, the best reimbursement rate out there. And if we wait much longer, within, if we have to wait another two, three years to put another referendum, we're going to be losing our percentage and we're also going to be losing the benefits of the construction out there right now. You know, I hate to say the word, it's a no-brainer, but it's just, it just does not make sense to hold this project jeopardy if you have questions about what's going to happen to Fermi. We've been asked that as PAC members over and over and our answer is, there is nothing that we can say that's going to stick because there's going to be two more Board of Education elections by the time this gets done. So, whatever we say, it may not stay for the next two elections. You board members can decide that. So, again, I plead that don't hold this project hostage just because we don't have an answer or the board doesn't have an answer of what the future will hold for Fermi. Again, this is just an unbelievable opportunity to achieve great, great results for our kids and financially, it makes unbelievable sense. Again, I just want to thank everybody for participating and for your support and thank you.
Thank you, Randy. We appreciate it. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak before the board? If not, then I'll close audience comments here and move on to item nine, unfinished business, policy revision. Policy number five-one-one-three, attendance policy catered throughout twelve, a second reading. At the last board meeting, we went through a first reading on this policy and at this point, I entertain a motion to move this policy on for the second reading and approval. So, moved? Moved by Mr. Feely. Is there a second by Mr. Johnson? Before we go on to discussion, I'd just like to ask Mr. Dreszek, he has some information on the issues themselves. My understanding is that this is a state change and if you could fill us in, just refresh our memories on that and then we can have some further discussion if that's okay with the rest of the board.
Sure. The only required changes and it was mandated by the state legislature is the definition of an excused and unexcused absence. And given how the policy is laid out, you'll see that it's, the attendance at school is defined between grades K through eight and then again in another section, grades nine through twelve. So, therefore, the definition for excused and unexcused is, it appears both, twice within the policy. Those are the only changes that will be made to the policy at this point, but those are all dictated as to what the legislature defined as excused and unexcused absences.
Any discussion from board members? They're being done? No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. You reached the ten excused absences, okay? And then they go to the hearing part, I guess? I'm hearing from parents at times that once a student's been out for ten excused absences, being sick or whatever, they have to go before because at that time, their grades are in jeopardy? Yeah, thank you for a good word. That's not just for being sick, but if a student is out for some other excused reason though, up to the ten?
For the tenth in absence and all absences thereafter, there are definitions as to what would be excused or unexcused. Beyond ten, you'd be considered truant. For underneath, for, you know, from ten and beyond that, if it's excused, then you have to look into issues as far as, you know, if it's a serious medical condition, there might be homeschooling involved. So, it's more than just a cut and dry, yes, ten, you're going to lose credit automatically. But that's in a different section. The only thing you're actually addressing in this policy is the definition, you know, per state guidelines as what's excused and what's unexcused.
Okay. Any other comments? Being done, roll call, please, Kathy?
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item ten, under new business, approval of school readiness quality enhancement grant, Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, there is a memo talking about the school readiness quality enhancement grant. It is a four thousand dollar grant available to the child, Enfield Child Development Center to enhance their school readiness program. Ms. Brown was going to be here tonight, but she's called away on family matters. But we do have Karen Edelson from the Enfield Child Development Center and Chris from the Kite Program here, if you have any questions. This is a grant that requires that the town manager and the superintendent sign off on. Mr. Koppeler has already signed off on it with approval from the town council and therefore, if the board chooses, the board may take action, allowing me to sign off on the grant so that it can go forward. If you have any questions, we have experts here to answer them for you.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Joyce.
Where will the students be, being schooled if they qualify for what is termed a scholarship in this grant?
They could be schooled anywhere from as NUNTAC Community College to any other local colleges or pursuing their four-year bachelor's degree as well. It's scholarships for any early childhood provider, not just the Child Development Center, any licensed or home provider who is pursuing their early childhood credits.
And anyone who is providing such care in town is eligible, is that correct?
Correct, at a licensed facility.
Thank you.
So, we're basically looking at adults here that are running daycare programs or involve, running it and then pursuing a degree in that area. Would that be correct?
That is correct, yes. It's scholarships for early childhood staff, yep.
Okay. Any other questions? The idea behind the grant, I assume, is just to get, increase the skill level of the folks who are doing these programs and maybe possibly standardize it in terms of the principles that...
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Have we had this before?
This was new to us last year. We did receive some funding and it is possible that it will be available every year, but it's not a guarantee. So, we do need to apply for it yearly as it becomes available.
Okay. Go ahead, Donna.
Do they have to be pursuing a degree or can it just be an enrichment?
They need to be pursuing at least an associate's in early childhood or a bachelor's.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Feely? You said you received this last year?
Yes, we did.
Can you give us any kind of follow-up as to what occurred last year with the funds?
Yes, we had three adults apply for the scholarship and they took classes at the local as NUNTAC Community College in early childhood to help pursue their early childhood credits.
Excellent. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That program at as NUNTAC, is that still run by Polly Parker?
She, she is still there. She was leaving, but is still working on...
That is an excellent program. And it's local, it's excellent.
That's good. I'm assuming you need action on this tonight to get it done, correct?
Yes, it would be helpful.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to, to accept the, whatever you need to. Go ahead, yeah.
I just need your authorization to sign the grant.
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. Grady and seconded by Donna Suzak. Is there any discussion on this? Sensing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Item eleven, board committee reports. Are there any committee reports here?
I don't know.
Okay. Moving on to board member comments. If I could start down at my left with our Enfield High person?
Hi, I got a couple of things. Our Friends of Rachel Club continues to meet. We have meetings a couple, a few times a week. We meet after school and as well during all the lunch waves, we have meetings. We've started our Chain of Kindness, which is going to be a visualization of the actual acts of kindness throughout the school. And last weekend, we also had our first meeting for the Senior Advisory Council that Mrs. Krieger just set up. It's a group of seniors who come together and we help give insight to Mrs. Krieger on different problems that we are having within the school. We addressed several things at the first meeting and we talked about how we were going to run this. One of the big problems that we addressed and actually resolved quite efficiently was we had some concern about how information was getting out to students about the college application process. And we felt that there was kind of a problem of communication and we addressed that with Mrs. Krieger and we've had immediate action taken and everything's been cleared up and we're getting information much quicker now. Thank you.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Well, she already left, but I want to thank Lori for coming. We went last year to Wreaths Across America and it was very powerful. It was a wonderful event. The other, I want to thank Lynn and Gina and Randy for speaking and for all their hard work that I know they put in. They have many nights out, similar to us, so I'm very excited. We're not the only one with the pain right now. I want to thank, Amy Whitbro has done a wonderful job with the youth vote and she's a hard-working woman. She's also in charge of Family Day and the Jack Fest and she's very, very busy. And I think, you know, a lot of people don't know what she does and she's a very powerful woman in town and does a lot of great things. And I want to thank the JFK teachers and I know a lot of the three-to-five teachers have been starting the youth vote and we had to go last night, so my son didn't have homework. So, they were very excited about that. Regarding Eli Whitney, last Friday, Tina and I were at the Monster Mash and she's mad because I'm mentioning it. And they also had their book fair, which was quite successful and today was school pictures. So, that went very well. Our boys didn't get photographed till two-thirty, so God only knows what our pictures are going to look like.
After PE.
After PE. So, I wanted to ask, is there any update on Hazerville's playground?
Yes. I have not heard from them, I can, from building around. Mr. Neville?
I can fill you in a little bit. I was going to do my comments, but I'll do it now if you'd like. Basically, the, it was not condemned, there was some parts that needed to be replaced. Unfortunately, some of the parts are no longer made, so they had to fabricate them. Some are and are available and they were ordered and I think they're here. The other ones, my understanding is they're shipping on the twenty-sixth of this month. And, and once they get them here, the grounds folks will go back and put it back together again and get it open. So, it's a high priority issue. It's just, it's a matter of, they're just, the parts were just not there and they literally had to make them from scratch.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mrs. Hall?
Am I correct in saying that everybody on the board got a copy of this?
I think so.
I did.
Yes, and I think Kevin did too. I think that's what this is.
Yes, yes. I think I got one at home.
It is the 2013 Resolutions from the, from CAPE. And I will be attending the delegate assembly on the fifteenth, that's the day before the start of the CAPE Conference. You should read these and let me know if there's anything here that you think we, as a board, should object to, so that I can take action at that particular meeting. And that also includes a consent calendar, which I'm not sure how this book is arranged this year. Twenty-three is the start of the consent calendar. And it probably only lists the names. Sometime in the next week, I expect to get some more information about the consent calendar, which again, again, you can object to and we can have it withdrawn from their decisions about legislative action this year or whatever. But I need to hear from you so I can actually faithfully represent you and not just myself.
We need to get it to you by the fourteenth, or earlier would be better.
Oh, anytime before the fifteenth would be very welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Feely?
Got a couple of things. First, for students that attend Adult Ed, they have some online classes that has come to my attention through Ms. Bidwell, that actually, the students may or may not be under the impression that they have to attend them. We do need you to attend in the building once a week. So, if you are online learning, please put that in your calendar and parents, you might want to be aware for Adult Ed. Second, I want to thank the administration for promoting Rachel's challenge. I think it's a very important thing for young people to have a place to go where they feel empowered. And to Mr. Van Tassel and his team for actually furthering it with Leaders for the Future. I think it's a wonderful program as well. Again, she's left, but Lori Gates, wow, what a heart kind of work she's doing in Wreaths Across America, much like Mr. Dagel. I was getting choked up watching it. Thank you both Lynn, Gina, Randy, for all the information that you're putting out there. Whichever way it goes, it won't be for lack of education, if you so to speak. And then fifth, just a reminder to teens who recently turned eighteen, you have to register to vote if you plan on voting. It's not an automatic thing. So, please, if you want to be a part of the process, and I encourage you, no matter what your views are, you need to get out there and register. You have a voice, not only in this election cycle, but in everything that goes on in this community. At eighteen years old, please, time's running out for the election cycle, so go out there and make it a priority and get registered immediately. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mrs. Suzak?
Actually, I've been spending my time going to Listening Learns and I am learning a few things from going there. I guess one thing that was brought up at the Eli Whitney one that kind of caused a little distress with me is the fact that there are people out there that believe that we won't necessarily be reimbursed by the state and that we have not been reimbursed by the state in the past, which precipitated a little research by our town staff, who assured me that the Fields did receive their full reimbursement from the staff. And on top of that, our legislators actually got us monies that helped with the mediation of the Fields, which is something that was not covered in referendum money. Okay. Other things, I think the thing that hit me the most was at the high school, when Mr. Newton said that he was assuring the parents that although we as a board talk a lot about this new high school that we envision and the STEAM philosophy and everything else that's coming down the pike, that he wanted the parents to understand that our high schools right now still are vibrant. We have a lot of things going on in our high school. And I think that he talked about the English and how the English department had realigned so that all their electives would be kept and we would have, you know, an eleventh-grade English program. But I think the thing that has struck me since I've come on the board is it started out as STEM and now it's gone to STEAM, which is very important to me. And the big thing with that was our end-of-the-year equipment purchases. The art department has eight Mac computers that are now in there. And the future is the integration of technology everywhere. So, I do want to reiterate what Mr. Newton has said and I want him to, you know, realize that it is important to listen to what people say. Thanks.
Very good. Now, we go to our Fermi representative.
So, last Wednesday, our sophomores and many of our juniors all took the PSATs. And while they were taking the test, Dr. Schuman came and talked with our freshman class in an assembly. an assembly. And meanwhile, a lot of our seniors were excused for the day to go visit colleges of their choice. So this week, this weekend actually, we have our homecoming and it's going to be very exciting again. Starting off Friday night is our Fermi Fest. And at Fermi Fest, a lot of refreshments are served, there's a bunch of entertainment, you know, a dunk tank that you can dunk all your favorite teachers and vice principals in, and a talent show, so that'll be really fun. And then Saturday, we have the parade and then after that, we have our football game, followed by our dance, which will start at 6:30. Sunday is the Raise of Hope Walk. This group, this walk is going to raise awareness for breast cancer. A lot of our students are involved in the Raise of Hope Walk, so we're hoping that just as many students as in the past are going to turn out this year and make this walk a memorable experience. Tuesday is our youth vote debate, so all our questions are underway, put the candidates to the test and hoping that will turn out well. And finally, on the 5th is, oh man, I forgot what I was going to say, the 5th NHS induction, hoping that's not changed again, but that's what it is so far. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes, once again, I will follow Mrs. Rancort with my comment. Yes, I was at the Monster Mash at Eli Whitney. I actually worked the baked goods table.
Whoa.
It was a great turnout. Last year I went and the turnout was a little sparse, but this year, there were many families and so much planning went into it and it was so well-attended and the teachers came and did the costume contest, so it was a lot of fun. I would also, I spoke to Amy Whitbro last night and she was so pleased at the social study teachers from JFK and how well they handled the youth vote and how they actually came out and took an active role and were interacting with their students and it was really great to see. I would also like to thank the PAC because I worked with some of you on the Pre-REF Committee, so I know that you're working really hard and I know your blood, sweat and tears are going into this and I know me as a board member and as a parent, I appreciate all your efforts on that. I just wanted to mention, one of the first things I actually got to attend after I was elected was the Rees Across America and I felt so honored to be a part of that. And there's so much going on right now with elections and debates and who's right and who's wrong. And you watched that video that Lori showed us tonight and you can really never forget who made that possible for us. And I believe when these soldiers are out there, they're not worried who's a Democrat and who's a Republican and who's right and wrong because they're a team and they're doing what's best for their country. So with that being said, with the local elections and the presidential election, I think everyone's intentions are good. It's just all about teamwork and that's what we want our kids to learn and we are, our behavior is what shows the kids. So that was just very touching and it meant a lot tonight, so that's it.
Very good. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. It's kind of hard to follow up on what everybody here has been talking about. The only thing that's still left on my list is a question that I have that I probably should have asked Mrs. Gates about, but are the other schools, would anybody here happen to know if the other schools are involved with the Rees Across America program?
Is it just Parkland? I believe so, but I'm not sure.
So the other students at the other elementary schools are not following, following any of this?
I'm looking at Mr. Van Tassel, he seems to have some information there.
At John and Katie Middle School last year was a great, a great scene. We had our student council actually went out to the corner as they were going by and had signs set up. So we were a part of it, we didn't get to actually go over to the school, but all the schools were notified of this and I believe that if you were along that route, schools had things that were out there awaiting the caravan as it came through.
What about the fundraiser part, I think that...
That's something else.
Lori usually asks the PTOs, she usually makes all the PTO, because that's the nonprofit part, that she usually asks the PTOs if they want to be involved.
Okay.
I don't know if they are, but I know when I was on the PTO, she had asked.
Well, as far as one of the schools infiltrate, it hasn't been mentioned at a PTO meeting yet.
Yeah, I don't know if Mary knows about it.
Perhaps you can find out for sure for us if you would, and maybe shoot us off an email and let us know. And if the board wanted to get involved in any of this stuff, we could just contact the schools, I guess, or Mrs. Sample, and have her hook us up with whoever's selling them.
That's all I have, thank you.
Very good. Vinnie?
Katie, before I get started, where's this walk being taken place on Sunday?
Honestly, I'm not sure, but I know we're reading in Long Meadow, it's somewhere, I believe it's in Massachusetts, somewhere. I wish I knew.
Could you find out for us and maybe have Mr. Newton send us an email or something like that?
Most definitely.
So if we can, you know, if we have a chance to attend or...
Yeah.
Maybe you do something like that if you don't mind.
All right.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Hold on just a second.
It's at the Forest Park.
Forest Park?
Forest Park. They meet in a different location, but the walk takes through Forest Park area.
Okay, terrific, thank you. All right, again, I guess I'll echo everybody else in thanking all the speakers tonight. Lori not just involved with Rees Across America, but anything that has really, anything to do with veterans, she was a key, key component behind the ballparks over by Mark Twain being renamed for two of our veterans that were killed in action, Mr. Philip Jordan and Philip Johnson, it was really a nice tribute to both of them and Lori was a key behind that. So she's, really is involved in a lot of things. I want to thank the members of the PAC Committee coming out here tonight and giving out that information to people that might have not had that information. I know you guys have put a lot of work into it and commend your work into something that you believe in very strongly. Before our next meeting, Dr. Schuman, I don't know if you can or Mr. Van Tassel can, our tag...
Program?
Program. Can we get an update on that and how many students are enrolled in it and how it's going and all that stuff? I know it started, I just want to see how it's actually going and all that stuff and if we can, you know, even an email or something like that or if you want to do something in your next superintendent's report, it'd be greatly appreciated. That's about it, thank you.
Got a couple of things here. One is, I was just reminded of it, I brought it up several meetings ago, about the graduation time, the going from 6:00 to 7:00 and at least considering it. I know the, not the PTOs, but the Save Grad Committees are anxious, as we knew they would be, because they want to set their date and time. So if we could maybe throw that on the next agenda for a discussion, just so that we can put it to rest one way or the other. Another thing is, I think I told you folks that we, Dr. Schuman and I and Mr. Koppeler and the mayor have set up a monthly meeting to work and collaborate and resolve problems and try to, you know, work together. We had our first one Thursday, was it, I believe, over at Matt's office. One of the things that came out of it, and we were talking about issues of the consolidation was one thing, but one of the things had to do with energy efficiency and efficiency in general and things like that. And he told us that there was a town-wide committee on the council side talking about energy efficiency. They offered to have a member of the board join in there since the majority of the buildings that we'd have to work on are on our side. And so I thought it was a great idea and so I'd ask you if you're interested in that, shoot me an email and then I'll get you a schedule of meetings and stuff like that and we'll appoint somebody to that committee. We also talked about coming up with committees in terms of maintenance and kind of outlining what are the needs that we have, long-term needs, because sometimes we get caught up in just one-year budgets, that's not a good way to plan and I think the board agrees with me on that. So they're talking about putting together a committee to look at these things, to find what the issues are and collaborate together and come up with a long-range plan, not that you get everything done at once, but a long-range plan so that not only do we, can we kind of put a timeline to getting these things done, but also educate the public about what the needs are, where money goes, where we need money in the future and so on, to keep our buildings up to date. And, you know, we were also talking about the fact that, you know, we have low gas prices now and I think most of you know that we're not on oil anymore. We actually have to remove the tanks, we're all, we're trans, we used to be dual, but now we're, now we're all just a natural gas. At some point, hopefully sooner than later, the economy will come up and when it does, I think you're going to see the natural gas price not be as artificially low as it is right now. So we need to do something about making the buildings much more efficient and coming up ways to deal with that. And so I think it would help us to come up with a collaborative look at that and see what we can come up as a group to plan that. So stay tuned, we're going to be bringing these kinds of issues back to you and I think it's a positive thing. I think we both walked away with a very, very good feeling about it to come together to resolve these kinds of issues. We also had, came up, we came up with our redefined committees and I spoke to, I've been looking at that with Dr. Schuman, I also spoke to some individuals here, I also spoke to Chuck the other day and shared some things with him. In terms of assigning them, certainly I can do that, but I was going to originally send out a memo and ask if they wanted to change, but I looked at it, I said, "That doesn't make sense." We have two committees that are running perfectly well right now, finance and curriculum, that are well-involved in their, in their content areas. And Chuck and I talked about the executive committee, but we also talked about the Student Issues Committee. So I'm putting some names, I've called some individuals I thought might be interested. I talked to Jen today, I put a call into Peter, I was hoping he'd be here so we could resolve it. I'll try to get ahold of him tomorrow. And I spoke to Vinnie about being on those committees and they've expressed interest to do that and I just want to firm it up with Peter. If there's somebody else that wants to be on that committee, let me know before I finalize it. I hope to send it out with Dr. Schuman's Friday update, I think that's what we talked about. And that we'd send out the committee list with the liaisons attached to it. So if anybody has any interest in that or an interest in that energy committee, please shoot me an email and we'll try to finalize it by Friday. First readers, I think that's great and I'm looking forward to attending. I already talked about the Hazerville, we're on Playscape, I think there's a lot of misinformation about that and I think that we've been able to get information, particularly Councilman Lee has been very, very instrumental in chasing that down and getting the dates, so I'm glad that that's being resolved. I think there's one other that is still in process, am I not, there's another school that...
Crandall.
Is it Crandall? And I haven't heard anything about that and perhaps you could get some information on that one. All the people who I've talked to and the parents who have been concerned are from Hazerville and I've talked to the principal twice or three times there as well, so if Crandall is still kind of in limbo here, I'd like to get that moving along here. I'd like to thank the PAC again, I know how hard you are working, I see you all over the place and I know how hard it is to put something like this together and I, for one, I think the entire board thanks you and I think the community appreciates your efforts as well. And I don't think I can say anything more about Lori than anybody already has. I mean, like you, I was there, it was my first, I think, function as a board member and I was just totally impressed and it was incredibly moving thing, our kids were just wonderful and it was such a great learning experience for kids. We forget that, that's a very, very important thing to bring out to kids. And Lori doesn't want any attention, she just does it from behind and just, she's not looking for glory, she's just doing it because it's the right thing to do and I just really, really appreciate her doing that. And I think that's it. Okay? Moving on to approve, item 13, approval of minutes, we have need to, for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for October 9, 2012. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Vinnie and seconded by Chuck. Is there any discussion? Being done, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention and Donna? Okay. Approval of accounts and payroll? Tina?
The Finance Committee met on October 16, 2012 to review financial statements for September year-to-date and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of September, total expenditures amount to $4,907,861.99, broken down between payroll totaling $3,821,827.27 and other accounts totaling $1,086,347.72. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Hall. Is there any discussion? Roll, show of hands, all those in favor by a show of hands? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I have one more, yep.
Financial transfers?
No, it's just another certification of expenditures.
We do?
The Finance Committee met on October 16, 2012 to review financial statements for September year-to-date and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of September, total expenditures amount to $90,969, broken down between payroll totaling zero and other accounts totaling $90,969.21. All payments have made, have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Second, Mrs. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Approved. The item 15, any correspondence and communication?
No, I don't think I had just the playground, that's all.
Okay, very good. Do we have need for executive session? Not this evening, no sir.
Most to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. ...
Great.
All those in favor, adjourn. Any opposed?